All right, Mr. Manager, it's 9:02 by the Mickey up there.
Good morning Chairman. We have two items for staff meeting today. One is a presentation, rather in-depth presentation regarding the zoo and some potential funding. And then Lindsay is going to give us a wrap-up of year-end transfers and put 2018 to rest. And maybe it would be prudent before we do that, since we have two new commissioners on board today, that we do a quick around the room. I'm probably limited to this, the staff table here, so they could at least know who they're talking with. That makes sense.
Tony, you want to start?
Sure, Tony Cole, Facilities.
Wes Ellington, Chief Information Officer.
Sheynah Schatz, Human Resources. Lindsay Corusso, IGS.
Dan Williams, Strategic Communications. Westy Lee, Public Service.
Tom Stolz, Inland County Manager.
Tim Kaufman, Public Services.
David Spears, Public Works.
Michael Dugan, County Council. Mark Clark, County of Tredon.
Sketching with Metcalfe Planning.
Kate Blayden, PIO.
Oh, you know me.
Very good.
Well, let Tim kick off the zoo presentation.
Good morning Commissioners. As you're all aware, zoo leadership, their staff, the Board of Trustees members and stakeholders undertook a very extensive planning process for most of last year. The result was a comprehensive strategic master plan that sets the course for the future of the zoo for years to come. Today, we'd like to continue that conversation specifically around Phase One of that new master plan. I'd like to recognize a number of guests that we have with us today from the Zoological Society Board of Trustees. We have Kevin Arnell, the current Board President, and Gail Malone, who chairs the Development Committee. And then staff Steve Onkin, Development Director, and Sarah Jantsch, the CFO, are here representing Dr. Jeff Etling, who is in New Orleans, where there's not fog, I understand, on an accreditation site visit today. Finally, I'd like to turn this discussion over to Craig Rhodes, an architect with GMLV that's responsible for much of what we see now at the zoo and what we will see in the future. Craig's going to lead us through some slides to look at the current environment and what the planned future is, and then Brent Shelton is going to discuss some analysis that he's done as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Craig. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you all very much for attending this this morning. Very important day for the zoo and for the community. If I can get the technology to work the way I'd like it to, all right, it's working, very good. Briefly, let's look at the master plan for the zoo, which was completed in October. It really, as Tim said, we looked at it from a strategic standpoint, which means what's it cost to operate? How do we raise funds? As well as the facility side, and so those two things line up at the end of the day. I want to point out a few things, not going to dwell on the overall master plan a lot, but we're going to get right to the Phase One projects. But there are about three or four major pieces, which I think the community will be excited about as we move forward. One is in the back forty, as we call it, this piece of property back in here, which is currently undeveloped, will eventually become an African safari experience, complete with a hotel and a water park, so it'll become a real destination for the community. Right in the center of the zoo, where you see the more purple areas, is where the existing African veldt is, and that is an area that is original to the zoo and is in major need of renovation. That will be developed as an Asian complex, complete with both animal and cultural aspects. Back in this corner of the zoo is one of the more exciting pieces as well, and that is not only an expansion of the amphibians and reptiles project, but the home of what could be a new aquarium experience. Following further and then right down here, the front, is one of the projects we're going to be spending a lot of time with this morning. It's new front entry. So really, we did look at the entire 242-plus acres, of which about 110 are developed now. This would continue to develop out that property. The Phase One projects, the entry area, is of course what we're here to talk about this morning, but this is, this plan highlights the areas where that Phase One development will happen. One of the first projects that will happen is back in this corner is a new home for the emerald leopards. The emerald leopards are one of the most endangered species in the world. The Sedgwick County Zoo is home to a breeding pair of those leopards, and it's very important to the zoo community and to the natural world that these animals can have a new habitat. They're one of the few large animals still at the zoo, at the zoo that are still in basically a cage, and that's one of the things that needs to be taken care of. Another project that'll be a lot of fun at the front entry, and of course throughout the whole zoo, would be a ride, a train, a chance train that will take the guests around the perimeter of the zoo, beginning and ending close to the front entry. And of course, the front entry administration and gift shop project itself. So we've had a lot of conversations over the last few years, it's like, why a new entry? Why does the zoo need a new entry? So I've been asked to present some existing condition slides, and I'm going to run through those real quick. Of course, this is the new entry, or the, this is not the new entry? This is the existing entry as you know it, and it's really obscured by the landscape, and the plaza itself is not large enough to handle the crowds. This entry, the design of this entry dates back to the late 1960s and was designed for a zoo to handle up to 100,000 people. Of course, the zoo is well past that, 500, 600,000 people on it, per year. So just the capacity is not there to throughput the people through this. If you haven't been in the zoo administration building, you really should stop by sometime. If you need to tidy up before you meet with Dr. Etling or Steve Onkin, you get to share the restroom with the furnace, which is this image right here. Zoo Administration, this is the existing workroom. This is the chief operating officer's office just to the left, so he gets a lot of commotion and things with all the, this is also, it's the workroom, it's shipping, receiving, it's everything. It's kind of the hub of the operation of the zoo. The entry booths work also as a lot of technology areas. They also double as storage areas, so way, very crowded. There's only four ticket booths right now that are typically in operation, which is way underserved for this size of community. Again, guest service booth area. This is the guest entry, and when we say guest entry, what happens is guests come through, if they come through as a member, they come through the membership office, then they'll go through an open office area, and then this is kind of the back door into the zoo. Development area also serves as storage. There is no storage for the offices at all in this building. The membership area, this is that area I just referred to where guests can potentially walk through. It looks a lot better than it did a couple of years ago, because they've actually invested in a few desks. It's interesting to note that this used to be a stroller shed, so the membership office is operating out of what was designed as a stroller shed. This is the, where the membership people, or people needing to renew their membership or have questions, come in and visit behind the counter. And I can say that as a member, I was actually in this space a few months ago renewing, and a family, an extended family of about 12 came in having some questions, and it was quite crowded. So, really need space there. Just looking the other direction in that space. Finance area, this is their storage. Finance area again. That's the safe. This is, this is in the first aid area. This is kind of typical, the condition of the building throughout, finishes are failing. Gift shop office. Gift shop storage, just not enough. Again, just not enough space. Volunteer office. There are a lot of people operating out of spaces that were never intended to be office space. So the crowds, the throughput of the crowds, this is on a spring day, the kids getting off the buses, the bus, fortunately, the parking lot works pretty well. That was redone a few, I don't know, maybe a decade ago, it works pretty well. So the bus drop-off works. But what happens is the kids get off the bus, and then they literally line up from that bus drop-off all the way to the front entry. And then you have that, along with all the guests that are trying to come into the zoo simultaneously, and you get crowds. In fact, we get, we believe there's people that come back later, or maybe choose to come another day, just because, again, getting people through this quick enough isn't working. This is the experience on the other side of the entry, and if anybody's been to the zoo in the last year or two, you realize that that is probably the most tired part of the zoo, is right there at the entry. You get in, there's been a lot of great development inside the zoo with the new habitats for the animals and other guest experience things, but the first impression is pretty tired, and this is part of it. And of course, Zubilee, the largest fundraiser the zoo society throws on, in September, you know, they can get several thousand people standing outside and into the parking lot trying to, trying to get in all at once, which is a great thing, our community loves the zoo. So let's talk about the proposed design. We've been working on this design really for about a year. We had our first meeting with zoo staff a year ago, thinking about this. It was one of the first things that Dr. Etling noted needed to be taken care of. What you're seeing here is the full build-out of the site as it would be. The bus drop-off that I just mentioned is on the east part of the site, north is to the right. If you were to go out there now, I'll give you a little context, the existing entry building is about where I'm moving the cursor on the screen, and this is the existing Cargill Education Center in this location. One of the challenges the zoo has is with the Cargill Education Center being about 10 or 12 years old, and it is actually out in front, a lot of people come to that building thinking that it is the front entry, when indeed it's not. So this reconfigures some parking, allows, again, allows for the bus drop-off to continue to work, but a very large plaza out here, treed shaded plaza, to allow thousands of people, if need be, to hang out, and, you know, really create a vibrant, live space. On the right would be the membership and administration building. On the left would be a gift shop. And you'll come through a gated entry. This will be a new type of entry system, or in keeping with today's technology, it'll be what we call a two-part entry system, so much like getting on an airplane. If you happen to have your ticket on your phone, you'll be able to go right up to the gate and get it scanned and go on in. If you need to buy a ticket, you can. If you have a member, you have some concerns, you'll be able to move through as well. Then the Cargill Education Center gets kind of reoriented, so one of the first things you'll see once you're inside the zoo is the education building, and education is one of the prime missions of the zoo. And then coming on back in, landscaped area, the flamingo pond gets a renovation, and then back to the existing water ponds that are here. So this is almost six acres of renovation of the zoo. It'll complete, it'll create a completely new experience as you enter the zoo. The dash line you see here is also, is the train that I mentioned earlier. Let's get into a few more details on this. I want you to take a look at this video. This is an animation we put together in our office to show you overall what this project will look like when it's done. Administration, membership building notes on the right, gift shop to the left. The canopy over the admin membership building is solar collectors. There's going to be a lot of green messaging in this, which is important to the zoo and their mission, so that's what you're seeing here. Members have their own entry. This is the floor plan of the north building, or the membership administration building. This is the first floor. Again, tickets from the outside right here. If you're a member, you can come in, there'll be a concierge desk right in this location. Be able to put a lot of people through this space. To the right is volunteer space, and to the left is other restrooms. These restrooms are actually on the outside of the zoo, or I'm sorry, they're on the inside of the zoo, the outside of the building. So as guests come through the main gate, they'll be able to access restrooms immediately. And then if you're coming to see staff or administration, you will come in here, you'll check with the desk, and they will show you the way to get into this kind of entry lobby at this location, then upstairs. There's about 10,000 square feet on this floor. Another important feature of this building is the golf cart parking. They do a lot of VIP tours and do a lot of cart traffic. You can imagine trying to manage 240 acres, a lot of times you've got to be out to the back of the zoo in a hurry, so we have accounted for protecting the golf carts from making easy access for the staff. Upstairs, once you come upstairs, will be greeted at reception area at this location. There's a boardroom for up to 40 people in that, in this location, right adjacent to the executive director's office and the COO's office. Also, we have restrooms up here, and then staff around the edges, including development and finance and all those necessary support pieces, workrooms, and then open office space. The open office space does account for a lot of staff that is scattered throughout the zoo now, and does allow for a significant amount of growth over the next 30 to 40 years. First-class office space, the zoo deserves. To the south of the plan then is the gift shop. The gift shop is really more than just a gift shop. Guests will be asked to walk through the gift shop as they exit, or they can also bypass it if the zoo decides to manage it that way. But it also has first aid and security on the zoo side of the building. Also has a place for, has a kennel on the public side of the building. This is because a lot of people are traveling now with their dogs and their cats, and they need a place to put them. They expect a place to put them, quite frankly, and, you know, as an animal welfare organization, the zoo doesn't want to see them kept in cars, so that'd be a nice amenity. So let's take another look at the exterior of the building. It is, the building on the right is a two-story building, lots of natural light, lots of neat, neat green features. It will, people will definitely know where the entry to the zoo is. We did talk about the new water treatment plant that's going to go in across the street of the zoo, which is important to note, because that will be a large facility, and we'd really not, don't want people to confuse the water treatment plant with the zoo, so. It'll have good presence, and on the left again is the gift shop. Overview again, showing the solar panels, also acting as a shade device on the administration membership building and the gift shop. So let's talk about what these projects cost overall, and the Phase One project costs. The building on the right, the membership entry administration project, complete with a lot of the site improvements that you see, is about, is eight and a half million. The gift, first aid, and security and kennels building is 1.5 million. Leopard habitat is 2.5 million, and the train is also 2.5 million, putting a total project cost of 15 million for Phase One of the zoo. The funding, one of the things we're here to talk about today clearly, is county's contribution of $6 million. The society contribution of $9 million, bringing Phase One contributions of a total of $15 million. And we have the proposed timeline for these projects. Facilities design, really from March to October of this year. Construction from November of 19 to March of '21. And then ribbon cutting in May of '21, which is the Sedgwick County Zoo's 50th anniversary. So a very nice 50th anniversary gift to the community. So that's my presentation at this point. Open to questions or turn it over to Brent?
Well, thank you Craig. We appreciate the feedback that you've provided us. Tim Kaufman and I have been able to set through the strategic planning process and the planning process that's gone into this, so I don't know that Tim and I'll have a lot of questions, but we do have a couple of new commissioners on board with us today that probably this is the first time they've seen this entire project. How many total phases are there? This is just Phase One, but this entire project is to stretch over the next 25 years or so.
It is a 25-year master plan. There's eight phases, as it's broken out right now. And the beauty of the phases is that a large, a large percentage of those phases could happen at any time, depending on how donor interest arises. Because some, you know, some donors might be more interested in this project or that project, and so it was really thought through to be able to be a very flexible plan.
Okay, and we do have, as I mentioned, we do have Cedric County folks on the board that meet with the board every single month, so that we stay apprised of what's been going on. We're aware of this request. They also came around and briefed each of the commissioners that were here prior to this, and so this is the first chance that Commissioner Meister and Commissioner Cruz has had a chance to see this. Right now, we're looking at, considering this request on the 30th, so I need to open it up to the commissioners at this time to see if they have any questions, so this is the time to be educated on it. And we do have the president and the head of fundraising, and part of the staff here with us that can help answer the questions. Commissioners, do you have a question we can help answer?
I don't really have a question, but I just, I did meet with Dr. Etling over the course of last month, and I was really impressed at how the staff was involved in the design and implementation of the new changes. So I think that that's really awesome, that we had an opportunity to have people that normally wouldn't be making these decisions have input. As a mother of small kids, I'm really excited about the entryway, because when they're very, I mean, you take your kids to zoo to burn energy, right? So when they're in line for 15, 20, 30 minutes to an hour burning energy, it's kind of frustrating. So I love the fact. I am interested in the solar panels on the, what kind of cost savings will we see by having those?
That's a fantastic question. I know the zoo has a great partnership with the, I always mess it up, Evergi? Is the new, is the name of the company now?
Evergi.
He's formerly West Star. Still West Star to me, I've been around a long time. We haven't actually got in, we haven't actually met with West Star or electrical engineers to come up with a percentage of savings now. We do think it'll be significant. It is interesting then to note though, along with the electrical panels, that the zoo is now on 100% wind energy, so it's, it's part of the conservation messaging that'll be moving forward throughout the zoo under the leadership of Dr. Etling.
Craig, maybe, I don't want to bore everybody else, but maybe you, you and somebody can update me at least on the 25-year big picture, and this is the Phase One of eight, you said?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
So, I mean, you probably all know it by heart, I'd just like to see.
Yeah, I ran through it pretty quick, didn't I?
Well, I know that you've had fantastic community support from various families, companies, donors, and so I don't need to know a lot of the details as much as just kind of the big picture. 25 years, I'd hope you could squeeze that a little bit.
Right, there's a lot of exciting pieces, and we did have a lot of community import, input. In fact, the entire staff of the Sedgwick County Zoo had a lot of input into this. What we did first-
That picture would be helpful for at least me to have.
Yeah, we can get that for you. I apologize for not bringing it this morning.
That's okay.
The entire, what we did first is we looked at the facilities and need replacing, and like I said, there's a lot of aging infrastructure at the zoo. The Asian farm is currently in need of repair or replacement. The African veldt building, which is the concrete building that the giraffe are in and the rhino, and formerly housed the elephants, is in tremendous need. So those pieces that opened 50 years ago are, have reached the end of their life, with the exception of the American barn, which is an exceptional building, so it had a lot of care over the years. So we looked at that first, and we looked at the animal welfare needs second, and that's how the emerald leopard moved clear to the front, because that is an animal welfare issue. And the zoo is very aware about, of course, clearly they do the best care of any zoo in the country or the world, but they're also aware of perceptions about animal welfare and how important that is to the guests. So that's how emerald leopard got to the front. Again, part of it is, so the master plan does touch every part of the zoo, starting with the front entry being Phase One, then Phase Two could well be the new African savanna. Reason being is, again, that, the building that those animals are in now is in need of repair and doesn't meet current welfare standards. So that would be probably one of the most exciting pieces for the community, as it is a 15-acre mixed-species habitat, much like something you might see if you go to the Wild Animal Park at San Diego or something like that, if you've been there. But it also would become a destination. In other words, you can come, stay at a Great Wolf Lodge-style hotel, you can stay there for a night or two, have views out into the savanna, so we borrowed from Disney a little bit on that, and also have, have an adjacent water park. So the weekends, like we're supposed to have this coming weekend where it's about 14 degrees, might be the perfect place to take the kids, hang out inside. So it really becomes a unique destination to this area, and that's about a-
That's Phase Two.
That is Phase Two.
So that would obviously revenue generation from hotel.
Absolutely. Every phase, as we looked at it, has revenue generation. Revenue generation is really important to the zoo, as they, as they're of course partners with you guys, but they generate a tremendous amount of revenue to keep this facility operating as well. So that, that would be Phase Two. And then Phase Three could easily be any of these other smaller projects that you see, probably the Asian piece, or maybe even an expansion of the Downing Gorilla Forest. There's a lot of interest in new habitats for the chimpanzees and orangutans, as that those facilities are aging rapidly too, as they're well into their 40-years-old. So that would be an expansion of the Downing Gorilla Forest. The purple pieces are the Asian piece. The yellow pieces are an expansion of the North American Prairie. Another, a lot of projects of opportunity happen within these phases. A project of opportunity might be an expansion of the grizzly bear habitat. Again, a habitat that 30-plus years ago when it opened was great. It's still, I think visually, one of the best habitats, but from a welfare standpoint, it doesn't meet the current standards. So it could be that smaller pieces of larger phases could happen at any time. The aquarium is right in this location. That would be a fantastic project for this community. One of the things we heard when we were doing the master planning process, without exception, from the first meeting to the last meeting, is aquarium, 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 aquarium. So that has a home near the center of the zoo. It's also, I think, important to note that we see this master plan as an update to the master plan that was done in the late 1960s, which was done by Dr. Blakely, who was director at the time. He did a fantastic job creating a visionary plan that still holds together well today, so we've just taken the thoughts behind that and expanded it. Why do I say that? When it comes to the aquarium, is that if you were to go to the zoo, there's a lot of indoor attractions right at the center of the zoo, including amphibians and reptiles and the jungle and the indoor space for chimps and orangs. The aquarium would also be part of that, so you can go to the zoo and have a shorter indoor experience on extremely cold days or extremely hot days. And that's really pretty brilliant, and that was done over 50 years ago. And of course, the areas over here are expansion of the farms. Purple area would be a South American piece and, that would replace the ASA netted enclosure, which is over in this location right now, so once South America and Australia are relocated. Then finally, the last piece might be expansion, more, more space for elephants, even though the zoo has, I believe, the best elephant habitat in the country, if not the world. The standards for elephants continue to increase, and this does allow for those programs to continue to increase as well. That would be the two-minute version.
Brent's also done some financial analysis, so if you've got, if you're ready for that, he's put some information out for you, but he can come up and talk through that as well.
Are there any questions for the zoo, first of all, and then we'll turn it over to the financial analysis. Don't see any. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For the benefit of our two new commissioners, I'm Brent Shelton with the Division of Finance, and I want to call your attention to a couple of- and I want to call your attention to a couple of documents that you have in front of you. One is a letter that was sent to the county commission from the Zoological Society in October of 2018. That explains in a lot more detail, talks about the 25-year plan, phase one, some funding options and so forth. And then the second document that you have is a one-page executive summary that we have worked up in the Division of Finance as we've begun to analyze this. We typically analyze funding requests from a community development and/or an economic development standpoint. And this one is one that's more of a community development request that does have some economic benefits. So as Chairman Dennis mentioned, this item is scheduled to be presented to you for formal B O C C action on January 30th. Between now and then, we want to provide you all the answers that, questions that you might have in order that you can make an informed decision on that date. So today, we'll just begin talking a little bit about the funding, how we would propose that this would be set up to fund this request. So let me get to the end of the presentation, the exciting part, which is the numbers. Currently, the zoo, Zoological Society and Sedgwick County operate under, in a partnership, and it's governed by a couple of different agreements. One is the operating agreement. That's been in existence since 2005, the current iteration of that agreement. And then in 2017, the funding agreement between the Zoological Society and the county was updated. And that is the funding agreement under which we're operating from 2018 through 2022. Under those agreements, typical funding is that the county will provide funds for county personnel at the zoo. The county will also pay for half of any capital improvement project expenditures. And then when we have initiatives such as the one that you're considering today, the society typically pays for the revenue-creating projects and then pays for animal habitats and exhibits. The county then would pick up new building construction, infrastructure maintenance and repair. So if we look at that typical funding model, phase one project costs would be split, eight million dollars for the, be the county responsibility under that model, with the remaining six-and-a-half million dollars then for the revenue-generating items and the animal habitat, which would be something that would be the responsibility of the Zoological Society. In the correspondence that you have from the Zoological Society, they've spelled that out and then spelled out a different funding option for phase one of the project. And that is a $6 million request from Sedgwick County to fund the visitor's center and half of the administration building at a $6 million level, with the society coming in then for the balance of the $15 million or $9 million. As we have looked at this, in addition to the operating efficiencies for the administrative aspects of the zoo, that new member experience, a better first impression, the ability to handle these crowds that we're seeing today, half a million visitors a year going through a, an entrance that was designed for a hundred thousand people, and this being the linchpin for the 25-year plan, we begin, this is, if you will, the first domino that needs to fall in order to make things begin to happen. So it is a community development project, improves our quality of life. We looked at a study from the American Society of Zoos and Aquariums, and they indicate that just from construction spending at zoos and aquariums, it has a multiplier effect. We use that information to derive an immediate economic benefit just from the construction aspect alone of about 350 jobs during the next three years, pumping about $16 million worth of payroll into the local economy. The ref, the letter references the economic impact of the zoo on an annual basis. That $43 million number is several years old, so that economic impact has continued to increase and we will work with the Zoological Society to continue to measure that economic impact. So it's not often that we have a project that we can, say, has that community and that economic development aspect to it, but this is one that, that would. How we would propose that, should you approve the $6 million funding support, is that we would propose three equal annual contributions of $2 million. The first one would be in 2019, then subsequent contributions in 2020 and 2021 of the $2 million. What this does is if you make that commitment now, you give the Zoological Society the information that they need to take to the community and to their supporters, saying that the county is in for $6 million, they've made the commitment, and that helps their fundraising as they go about acquiring the $9 million necessary to complete the project. It also helps from the county's financial position. We would propose that the first $2 million, the 2019 contribution, come out of our operating reserves, budgeted for 2019. We would take $2 million from there and then in the budget process for 2020 and 2021, the additional $4 million would be in that process. So it would come before you at one time on the 30th to approve the, make the commitment for $6 million, authorize the funding agreement and move forward with the three $2 million annual contributions. So that's basically a quick summary of what we would propose would be, would be a workable solution for everyone, should you consider that. So I'll stand for questions.
Thanks, Brent. Questions, information?
Why, why was it determined that it was, the format would be $2 million for three years versus $3 million for two years or $1 million for six years or whatever? If you're not with the-
Okay. We kind of discussed that with CFO and myself. We've got operating reserves budgeted right now to about 8.9 million for this year. And so if we put $2 million toward that, then future funding requests, we didn't want to push it all in the out-years because they need a little bit to get started now. It just kind of eases that budget process going forward.
And I'd like to talk more fully about that. So we have a forecasting tool, the budget officer, and what that shows us is that in 2019, we're actually projecting about a $2.3 million surplus in the general fund. And that was one of the directives that the commission gave at the time the 2019 budget was adopted, not to have a deficit. And so even with this payment in 2019, it wouldn't cause a significant issue for the 2019 budget. It also gives us plenty of time to plan for and mitigate the impact to the 2020 and 2021 budgets. As you'll see as we work through this process, we do have a number of competing interests between technology radios, capital improvement plans. And so this way, we can, I, we believe, more easily manage that and mitigate the overall impact to the county budget. And I think it works for the zoo too, as Brent pointed out, so that's also an important factor.
Other questions on finance? You must've done a very good job, Brent.
Okay, I'll take that.
Good. Does anyone from the Zoological Society like to say anything? Kevin, you have any comments?
Excuse me, didn't plan-
We need you to go up to Mike, if you don't mind.
Didn't prepare or plan any comments, but would just like to say thank you to the commission for considering this request, for the strong partnership for nearly fifty years and the support that you've shown Chairman Dennis for your participation on the board. And, and we'll look forward to that continuing. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to address them, but otherwise, I'll sit down and let you move on to important business.
Any questions for Kevin?
Thank you.
Thank you. Gail, you have anything you want to say, since you're in charge of fundraising?
Again, I want to reiterate what Kevin said. We look forward to continuing our partnership with you all. The $6 million, if we are granted that, helps us really get to the total $15 million, which is our goal and we really want to be able to accomplish. But we've got to have a new entry before we do anything else with the zoo. And I'm here to answer any other questions on fundraising, and you all know how to get hold of me if you have any other questions.
Any questions for Gail?
I do have one question.
Question how?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just thinking about the, the goal of raising $9 million. If you, if you, as you raise the money, I assume that the money will go towards the entrance first and these other projects will be funded last in that, in that goal of $15 million total. I don't, I mean, I was just, I don't want to see you start the, the process of doing entrance, you know, in, in November of this year and then run short on cash because it's going to take you three years to probably get to $15 million. So I don't know how that works out in terms of the timeline on all the projects that are part of this phase one.
You're correct. The first thing we want to do is get that entry done. Our goal would be to have everything done and opened for our 50th anniversary. So we want to raise the funds, which will first go to the entry and then train and then gift shops and everything else that we're doing.
Okay.
So yes, no, we're not going to leave it hanging and not be able to get it completed.
Very good. Thank you.
One thing that wasn't mentioned about the train, and we're always worried about the environment, this train is not something that's going to contaminate the environment from what I understand. It's, you want to describe it?
That is true. It is a green train, which is a plus. It is also manufactured here in Wichita, which is also a plus, keeping our jobs here. It will run, it'll have solar panels, it runs on electricity. It's really cool-looking. It really, really is. I'd be more than happy to share pictures and stuff like that with you all, too.
Very good.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. That's in phase one.
That's in phase one.
Thank you, Gail. I appreciate it. Any other questions on the zoo before we move forward with the, not forward with the zoo right now, you'll do that the 30th, but before we move forward with the next items? Again, I want to thank the folks from the zoo that are here with us today. We appreciate it very much and we look forward to further discussion on the 30th. Thank you. Ms. Manager?
Financial transfers. Well, commissioners, this next item is year-end transfers and it's not remotely as interesting as the zoo. But it is important. So Tom has allowed me to just take a few minutes to talk through you, with you, an item that's on your consent agenda tomorrow. It is regarding year-end transfers. This is a fairly routine thing. This will happen every year, but to walk through maybe some of the technicalities and the details for some context and some background, I'll just go through a couple of the super fund state budget law rules that we have to follow as a county. So we are a political subdivision of the state, which means that we don't enjoy the same home rule authority that a city does. We can only do what the state explicitly allows us to do under statute. And so one of those, of course, is that we have to do fund accounting. And so what that means is the county has forty-some funds, the biggest of which is our general fund, but all of those other funds are tied to a specific activity. And that fund receives revenue and spends money on services tied to that specific function. So a good example maybe is EMS. We provide EMS services with paramedics, with ambulances, we pay for electricity at posts, and then we also go out and deliver a service and charge for that service. That money and that expense all goes into the EMS fund. So that's one of the fund rules. The next fund rule is that we have to limit the cash transfers between funds. Again, we can only do it if state law specifically says that we can. And so we do that typically at year-end when there is unspent budget authority. The commission, of course, adopts a budget each year. That budget gives the county divisions the ability to spend money. If you don't give us spending authority, it doesn't matter how much money we have in the bank, we cannot spend it. And so what happens at the end of the year is that budget authority expires if it's in a budgeted fund. It just goes away and we start brand-new, fresh, January 1st with a brand-new budget. Well, sometimes we have uses for that unspent budget authority. Maybe something didn't arrive in the calendar year that was supposed to be here. Maybe it's simply a matter of there was something that came up that was unanticipated and maybe we have some revenue to support that. So what we do is we come to you and ask you to approve a resolution to transfer cash from one fund to another fund. We have only a couple of funds that can receive that cash. One of them is the equipment reserve and one is the capital improvement plan fund. Both of those funds are what we call unbudgeted funds. That means that that budget authority doesn't expire at year-end like it does everywhere else. But of course, the state has lots of rules about how we can spend money in those funds. And so what you have before you tomorrow is a list of transfers from various budgeted funds to one of those two unbudgeted funds, either the CIP or the equipment reserve. And so if you look at the agenda item, you should have it, it looks like this at your seats. I'll just go quickly through what those are. So the first section here, kind of in the middle, shows a list of transfers. It shows where they're going from and where they're going to. And so these are all happening in the equipment reserve fund. The first that you'll see is for fleet. Unfortunately, this has become a fairly routine transfer that we do at year-end. We will put in requests for vehicles, put in purchase orders, and maybe they're not received by December 31st, which we have accounting rules that tell us that's the only way it can count against the current year's budget if it's, if it's received by December 31st. So what we want to do is transfer $462,878 from the fleet fund to the equipment reserve to allow us to pay for those when they come in and not have it impact the 2019 fleet budget. Next, you'll see four listed for the county general fund. The EOC upgrade, that was something that was actually included in the 2018 budget. It wasn't quite finished. The emergency management department does have a fairly small budget and so having to pay an additional $13,000 that they didn't plan to, to do in 2019 would be a problem for them. And so this is a good solution to put that money in the equipment reserve and allow them to complete that. Then you'll see compact excavating equipment, and this is for public works. For the three commissioners who were here earlier this year, you probably remember the township dissolution fund transfer that came to you. This is simply moving that money that was received in the general fund into this equipment reserve fund to allow public works to purchase this equipment. This had been a 2019 decision package, but this is the way that we had figured that we could do this without impacting the 2019 budget. You'll see another transfer for CAD. As we talked about at your retreat last February, we know that there's a real need to replace our CAD system. That cost is estimated at $3 million. This gets us an additional $1 million toward that project without causing a deficit, so of course, a good solution, we believe. And then finally, you'll see one that comes from the sheriff office or acts on body cameras. We actually already have a, an invoice that's waiting to be paid that will allow us to do this, again, without harming the sheriff's 2019 budget. Then you'll see the final, toward the very bottom of the page, the final transfer requesting. And you'll see this is a pretty big number, $5 million. But the bulk of this is the $3 million that the commission earmarked toward an administration building earlier this year. And I promised you that we would do a year-end transfer in order to put that cash in the CIP fund, so this will execute that. There's also some additional cash that will go into the CIP reserve and as CIP amendments come to you, or as we plan for a CIP that's going to come in through your 2020 through 2024 CIP, we can certainly earmark that cash toward those uses as well, but we will come and talk with you about those things. So I know that's a lot of information I just threw at you. It's not nearly as fun as the zoo, but are there questions or anything I can do?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How much is in the CIP reserve as of today?
I don't know, but we can get that information and get that sent to you.
Okay. What, what is, what was our total year-end reserve, not including the, the money from the Greyhound Park?
If you look at the general fund, our operating surplus right now is estimated, well, it actually is $8 million before we do these transfers. And so if we were to take out the Greyhound Park, which was roughly 1.7 million, that would put us at about 6.3 million.
Total?
And part of that is M A B C D, that hadn't quite spent, all of its revenue received and some other things.
So these two requests are a little over $8 million. So you're estimating no dollars and go into our overall reserve this- So you're estimating no dollars and go into our overall reserve, this is allocating all the reserve money?
We, well, some of this is actually from the fleet fund, that five hundred thousand, and so it wouldn't, we would actually have a surplus at year end. At least about a million dollars, probably upwards of one point five to two.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Couple of questions. The CAD and the RMS are something that we've been talking about for a long time. Where are we at on those?
Well, we will be talking about them at length at the retreat, but I'll let Rusty give you that update.
So the intent with this, with this transfer of a million dollars that Lindsey's talked about today, the intent was we would have all of the funding in place to purchase the CAD and the sheriff's RMS JMS systems in 2020. So Alora and sheriff's personnel are working together right now to build the RFP. The intent is to push that RFP out mid-year of this year, so that they can get responses back, start evaluating the responses, and have a product or a vendor picked, so that they can make that purchase shortly after the beginning of 2020 and begin implementation in 2020.
And RMS, we are not partnering with City of Wichita like we hoped?
No, sir. The sheriff, Wichita Police Department has acquired and is implementing, or has implemented their, the records management system. The sheriff will purchase a new records management and jail management system that integrates with our CAD system. That's why Emergency Communications and the sheriff are working together to buy a product that integrates together and...
Well, I'm fairly disappointed that Wichita didn't partner with us in that. And we have made it clear to the City of Wichita that if they want access to our records management system and our computer-aided dispatching system, that they're going to pay for the interface now.
Yes, sir. We, it's understood that as far as interfacing their RMS with the CAD system, they've indicated that their, their vendor will build that interface at no cost to them and no cost to us, to interface with CAD. As far as communicating between the police department's record management system and the sheriff's, that's something that the two of those departments will have to determine their needs there.
Okay. Very good. Well, we had a number of meetings. I was very disappointed in the outcome of the meetings, that we couldn't get City of Wichita to partner with us on that project. But I do not want us to slow down. We made the decision early last year that we are going to move as fast as we can to get the CAD and the RMS online, and I don't want us to slow down on those projects.
Yes, sir. The intent is to implement in 2020.
Very good.
The funding will be in place, and the responses from the vendors should be back, and we should be implementing in 2020.
Okay. And our Capital Improvement Fund, you're saying that we're going to have, how much money total in the CIP that's available to us?
Well, this five point two million would be transferred there, but of course, three million dollars of that has already been earmarked for Ronald Reagan. And so we also have some other ways we would like to spend this, some proposals that we will bring to you, but we would do that through walking the halls, and then it would come to you through any CIP amendments if you actually want to do it.
First of all, I'm very pleased that we're finally earmarking the money. So we're talking about not only the money from Ronald Reagan, where also we wanted to earmark the money from the sale of the Greyhound Park that goes to enter the CIP. So that's what we're doing at this point.
Yes, and actually, a little more even than that.
Good. Well, we've been asking for that for a year, and now we were able to do it.
Finally, Lindsey.
I know. I'm a slacker. I'm sorry.
No, I understand the process. I'm not saying that we were slacking on it at all, but I just wanted to make sure it got accomplished. Yes, Chairman.
Commissioner. Back to the RMS system and the CAD system. So I as well am disappointed that, that the two departments didn't arrive at the same technology replacement. Both are vastly outdated, what I understand about it. However, so, just out of curiosity, so when the Derby Police Department, Valley Center, everybody else, do they, the records management, do they have to interface with this system within the county?
Yes, sir.
Are they the same rules that, as far as paying to interface, things like that?
All the fire departments, the fire departments and the police departments, if they have different types of records management systems that need interface with CAD, they work out the interface costs with Emergency Communications.
Who's "they"?
The departments. Each individual department works that out with Alora, as to whether or not that interface is, has some cost to it, or it does not. Currently, the systems that are in place are all interfaced, and I don't know the historic cost on those old interfaces. I just know that in the discussions with Wichita, the chief indicated that NISH, or whichever, I think that's the product they bought. As part of that contract, that vendor would provide the interface to our current CAD product, and that understanding that we were going to go to a new CAD product, that vendor would also provide the interface to that at no cost to the city or to, obviously, the county. So that's my understanding on that particular product.
Yeah. And I agree with, the City of Wichita has an example needing to pay for their stuff, and I just don't, I think we gotta be consistent with all of the police agencies in the county, or work with them all equally, one way or another.
Correct.
So, okay. Thank you.
As long as we're asking you questions on this, and it probably has nothing to do with the transfers, but one of the other things that we were talking about for some time are radios. Where are we at on that? I know it's not part of this discussion.
So all of the county departments have worked together through Emergency Communications and our radio shop. The RFP has been developed and is in final stages to push out, so we should be issuing an RFP for the radios, probably within the next month, next few weeks. I've seen the first draft, and I understand there were some tweaks that had to be done to it, but it should go out quickly, so we will be purchasing radios this year, Phase One, it's in three phases. We'll do Phase One this year, Phase Two in 2020, and the final phase in 2021. We're seeking a three-year contract with level pricing. We get pricing now, the pricing will stay in effect for all three years, and we've worked out the plan on which departments we will replace in each of those three years, so we should have the RFP issued soon and begin our first purchase this year and complete in 2021.
Good. And these are compatible with the dual frequency or whatever the City of Wichita wants?
Will be compatible with Wichita.
Okay. Good. All right. Any questions on our transfers?
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask a similar question on the body worn cameras. I, we have not had a lot of discussion, it only hasn't been in the news that Sheriff's Office is doing body worn cameras. I'm very supportive of that, but I was curious, does this outfit all the, all the deputies that are on the road? What's, is this a complete set for our entire forces gonna be out there?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, Colonel Richard Powell with the sheriff's office. This will, they're actually, we already are starting to get them in place, which will include all of our uniformed officers that we normally associate with our marked patrol cars responding to calls for service, plus our uniformed deputies in the judicial division of the Superior Courts and Court Services. Pretty much anyone you see as an active role in the eyes of the community wearing a uniform on the outside, you're going to see a body worn camera on them.
Does that include the courthouse police?
No, that's a separate department. There were a hundred and, I believe there were a hundred and eighteen camera systems that we purchased.
And I know that Wichita went through a lot of public discourse on, on policy, on how they would be used and that type of thing. Has the county gone through that yet? Do we have a policy on?
The sheriff's office is in the process right now of updating our policy on, of course, usage implementation of the cameras themselves, and then, of course, there's both statutory direction on the release of video and such, and of course, that we'll also have our own internal policy. And of course, there's also some government retention of those video files and things like that.
So based on the transfer here, it sounds like these have been ordered, maybe, probably not received yet, but the billing's in, kind of in cycle, so that, that's why it's on there. Very good. All right. No questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are those, are they always turned on, or do the officers have to turn them on themselves?
It'll be dictated by policy. We'd be certainly, we can discuss that at a future date if we need to present some more information to you, because the policies are not a hundred percent finalized yet.
But the officers have the capacity to turn them on?
Yes. And then, of course, the, there's an associated camera that goes in our, in our marked patrol cars also, that is governed both automatically by the selection of various levels of emergency equipment being turned off and on, and then also by the deputies themselves, who have the ability to turn those things on and off. Yes, sir.
I understand at the state level, there's been no direction yet on how many days maybe that the victims are released to the media? Is that, is that in the state?
There's a lot of discussion at the legislative level, you know, clearly, we'll be looking for, you know, there may be, along with the legislative decisions, there may be direction by the courts. And of course, we have our own retention policies internally with the county on some items associated in the light business, and then, of course, we'll have our own internal policy within the sheriff's office that will also dictate those things. There's a lot of, a lot of benchmarks already in place, and it's not like we haven't had video before.
Right.
We've had video in our patrol cars for at least twenty-plus years.
But as of now, each jurisdiction sheriff's department gets to determine their own rules, and then, obviously, you're talking to district attorney's office, because they have to determine as well, especially on the victims and witnesses.
Correct, sir.
That's a tough one.
It is.
So you use best practices, I assume, from around the country?
Yes, best practices, and of course, aside from best practices, what are the expectations here locally that we need to address also?
Commissioner Howell?
Back to the transfer questions. So based on Commissioner O'Doll's question, you said there was about counting the Greyhound Park, about eight million total. Some of that was, was allocated for the admin building, plus three million, I guess, from the recent geo bonds we took on Reagan, I think, are gonna be directed towards admin building, correct me if I'm wrong. But that brings the total up of about eight million total, and we're transferring another five point two. Or is that in addition to the eight million, or is that?
So, I think maybe I need to clarify what I was talking about. I apologize. So we have a surplus right now in the County General Fund of eight million dollars before we do these transfers. And so of that, five point two five million would come from the General Fund, and so that would reduce the surplus to roughly two point seven. But then we also have those transfers listed up above, from the General Fund to the Equipment Reserve, and so all told, we're expecting after the books are closed, and we're, of course, still going through the audit. We still expect to have a surplus north of a million to two million dollars.
I put things together, I shouldn't have, but thank, I explain this a lot better. Thank you very much.
Sorry. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on the transfers? All right. Ms. Manager, do you have anything else?
Just one more quick note on the RMS CAD system. So two or three years ago, when we realized that CAD was going to have to be replaced along with the phone system, which Alora did last year, we historically have provided CAD system for, we dispatched for the entire county. What we have not done historically is dovetailed the RMS system with the CAD system. This is our first foray into this, which is why we tried so hard to get Wichita to be involved, to have a nice, consistent platform. So even as we go through this, the first time of putting the CAD and the RMS system together, I am not sure, and we'll check with the Class Two and Three cities around the county, they will require our CAD services. We dispatched for them. I don't know if they'll need our records management system or not, so that's a discussion Rusty will have with the smaller jurisdictions. But I do agree with you, Commissioner, we need to be consistent, that if they do want to dovetail into that record system, they should have to pay for the patch, so. The only other thing I had, sir, unrelated to that, was starting next Tuesday at this staff meeting, we would like to have a little bit of an agenda review process that would be first on the agenda, and it would be the agenda review not for the fall, for the next day's meeting, but for one week from then. It'd give you guys a chance to look at the first blush for what's gonna happen eight days from now on commission, on commission business. So I'll start that next Tuesday, and I say that for the staff's benefit, too, that if they can get agenda items into us promptly, so that we can give the commission eight days out, at least a good overview of what we're going to be discussing in the future meeting, I think that would benefit the organization, so just an FYI for that.
Right. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? So sometimes we don't have staff meetings because there's not really substance to discuss. Would that, would that create a reason to meet every weekend?
It depends on the agenda. If, I don't think that creates a reason to meet. I, I just think it's important that Commissioners, all Commissioners, and of course, we walked through on the Thursday before the meeting with the chairman in detail, but I wanna create a mechanism where all Commissioners get a little bit of an agenda review before they actually get the final review on Friday. So if that would happen, Commissioner, we would have no other reason to meet. I'll walk the halls on that and get you all an agenda review.
That's what I wanted. Thank you.
I get it. Chairman. Mr. Commissioner, if you might. So that, so the Tuesday before, eight days before that, that'll still be, can be flexible?
Yes. It does, nothing becomes etched in stone until the Friday, Commissioner, just like on your side, at the city's side, the final agenda without a Friday is the same way over.
Makes sense. I agree.
Anything else, Commissioners? I have one thing I wanted to let the Commissioners know. I got a phone call yesterday from a Mr. Jay Vincent with a company called Williams Company, and they're going to be putting a national gas pipeline from Conway, Kansas, down to Fisher, Kingfisher, Oklahoma, a total of a hundred and eighty-one miles, a sixteen-inch gas pipeline, be finished in early 2020. But if you look where Conway, Kansas is, west of McPherson, and where Kingfisher, Oklahoma is, south of here, they're gonna be running a sixteen-inch pipeline across all of Sedgwick County, basically, which is gonna impact going across a lot of property here in Sedgwick County. It's gonna require a lot of our roads, I don't know if they're gonna cut through the middle of the roads, or if they're gonna go under them, or what they're gonna do.
They should go under.
But they're, I told them they need to coordinate with our Public Works Department to make sure that that's all up to speed, but I anticipate when they start making the phone calls to all of the different property owners they're going to go across, that our Commissioners are gonna start receiving some phone calls, because they're not gonna go through the middle of Wichita, they're gonna go around in all of our districts someplace. So it is gonna impact our landowners, and you need to be aware when you get a phone call, that somebody may be calling to say, hey, who's this that's digging a trench through the middle of our yard? And the other thing I had a question on that I didn't ask him, but I need to ask our appraiser, is that once they put a big pipeline through, do we get tax money for that? Is that something that increases the value?
You can't ask for that.
They have to what?
You can ask for that.
Well, I don't know why, that if someone is putting something that's high value through the middle of Sedgwick County, we wouldn't be able to tax that.
We typically are not going to, the county appraiser will not handle that. That would be a state of sub-profits. But if a company is putting something through your county, there have been counties that have asked for money and have gotten, but others that have asked and have not.
That's something we need to keep track of, to find out if it is a taxable item that belongs to this company that going through our county.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you encouraging them to keep it on the west side of the county route.
Okay. Let's go around the table. Does any of our staff have anything we need to add today? Anything, Mr. Papoon, today that we need to worry about?
Well, we can talk about the legislative issues today, or I can bring them up during the legislative portion of the agenda tomorrow, if you prefer, Mr. Chairman.
I tell you what, why don't we touch on some of them today? Because tomorrow, we're gonna have a reception following the meeting, so if, if you could touch on a few of them, and then I'll open it up to you tomorrow also.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. Mike Papoon, interim county counselor. We received a, an email yesterday from our contract lobbyist, Jason Watkins, and there have been four bills that have prefiled, been prefiled that affect Sedgwick County, a House Bill 2002, which is limiting tax abatements for fire districts. This essentially is a bill that will provide that if there's an IRB or an EDX exemption filed by a city or for a company of IRB bonds, that fire districts are exempt from paying the property, or, while municipalities may be exempt from property taxes, fire districts will continue to get their property tax from those. So far, that looks like a good bill for the county, or fire district in particular. There's a House Bill 2008, which is daylight savings time, a bill that's near and dear to the heart of the chairman, and I'm trying to get more information on that. It's to take effect It's to take effect at 2:00 Antemiridian Time, whatever that is, Sunday, November 1. I'm assuming, well, I'm not assuming, I need to find out whether this means that they're going to go into permanent daylight savings time, should the legislation pass and get approved, or permanent standard time. I mean, I, you would assume that if, that ends on November of 2019, that that might mean they want to continue the summer extended daylight time, but we'll find out for the commission on that. Senator Hensley, Minority Leader of the Senate, has proposed a bill that in counties exceeding, a population exceeding 130,000, that the election commissioner shall be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners instead of the Secretary of State. The commissions, obviously expands the role of County Commission in choosing an election commissioner. And the last bill is a bill that is called the Fire Sprinkler Act, and is a very long and detailed bill dealing with regulation of these fire sprinkler companies, working with the state fire marshal, and I know that Mr. Labrum's here, I know that he's looked at it, our fire department has looked at it, the city fire department has looked at it, and I think there are a number of concerns about the bill, the way it's drafted right now, but it's, it's certainly on our radar, and I'm sure Chris can talk more about it, or we can get somebody to do a presentation for you if you'd like on that, so.
Good. As long as staff stays up on that and lets us know if we need to weigh in, that's the main thing.
And those are the four bills that are on our radar right now, sir.
What was the, the election commissioner bill? What was the number on that?
That number, it's Senate Bill 3.
Oh, Senate.
Election commissioner appointed by County Commission for the larger counties that have election commissioners.
Hey, anything else from staff we got to worry about? Okay. How about staff cross back to room? And our electeds? I thought I saw Kelly in here earlier, but I don't see him in here now. Very good. Well, if we have nothing else, I guess we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.